Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us. And we have four young men on the upper deck that we're glad to have you here as visitors. Thanks for being here. We have three meetings today. We're going to move along as rapid as we can. We'll start by, the first meeting will be the Hacienda Community Facilities District Board Meeting, and start with roll call.
Chair Kirkendall.
Here.
Member Cookneyo.
Here.
Member Arnold.
Here.
Member Blair.
Yes.
Member Lamerson.
Here.
Member Lozelle.
Here.
And Member Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Okay. Go ahead and call the agenda, please.
Item A: Approval of minutes for the Hacienda Community Facilities District Board Meeting held on July 22, 2014. This item is just for the approval of the minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, on motion.
Okay.
Move to approve the Hacienda Community Facilities District Board Meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, item two.
Item 1B: Public hearing and adoption of budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District for fiscal year 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is our annual budget adoption. This is the annual budget, which is mainly debt service. Hacienda Community Facilities District also has some money left in capital projects, which we've been budgeting the last few years for a wastewater capital project that's been in development. This year, it'll probably be moving forward with the Sundog trunk main that's going to be in design this year. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions.
When does this pay off, Mark?
It pays off in, I think it's 2024.
So it's still quite a ways yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, council? Comments from the public? Okay, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 42, setting the fiscal year 2016 budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Call the meeting to order, please. Today is Tuesday, July 28. This is a meeting of the Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two Board. Roll call, please.
Chair Kirkendall.
Here.
Board Member Cookneyo.
Here.
Board Member Arnold.
Here.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Lamerson.
Here.
Board Member Lozelle.
Here.
Board Member Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Item A.
Item A: Approval of minutes for the Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two Board Meeting held on July 22, 2014.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two Board Meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item B.
Item 1B: Public hearing and adoption of budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two Board Meeting held on July 22, 2014.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two Board Meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item B.
Item 1B: Public hearing and adoption of budget for Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two for fiscal year 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, this is, Hacienda Two is a community facilities district just adjacent to the other Hacienda Community Facilities District. This one is just a much smaller district and does not include any construction. It's just the repayment of the debt. To clarify my answer earlier at the prior meeting, that bond matures in 2021, and this bond matures in 2025, as I recall. So those are the two dates.
Okay, with the prepayments, and I don't remember the last few years, but they're ahead of the game, obviously.
Yeah, several, these are unlike most of our special assessment districts in that they have allowed prepayments. So several homeowners have prepaid out there. But the overall bonds will still go until the maturity date. We just reduce the amount of the bonds across.
I see. Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 18, setting the fiscal year 2016 budget for the Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 18, setting the fiscal year 2016 budget for the Hacienda Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're now adjourned. Let's call the meeting to order. This is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Today is Tuesday, July 28, 2015. Do we have representatives from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in attendance? They may be running a little late. Let's move on. Councilman Arnold will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Stand, please.
You'll follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. Roll call, please.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Prochem Cookneyo.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Okay. Any announcements from staff?
No announcements, mayor and council.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda, and you have a comment there.
I do, I have an announcement for item A on the consent agenda. For the minutes of April 28, 2015, on page 12 of the minutes, the third paragraph, the third line, the word "flagstaff" should be replaced with the word "staff." There was a.
I was going to point that out to you, Dana.
Yeah, okay. So that's the only correction to that. With that, I'll read the consent agenda. Approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on April 28, 2015, May 5, 2015, May 14, 2015, May 26, and May 28, 2015. Item B: Approval payment of fiscal year 2016 dues to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns in the amount of $23,200. Item C: Approval of increase of $20,000 in the FY 2016 expenditure limit for city contract number 2013-032 with petroleum traders for delivered bulk fuel. Item D: Assignment of cellular site lease from Verizon Wireless to American Tower Corporation at the 812 Douglas Avenue City Water Tank Site, city contract number 2005-446. And item E: Adoption of ordinance number 4941-1479, authorizing granting of a utility easement at Prescott Municipal Airport to Arizona Public Safety Company. Ordinance number 4941-1479, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement.
Okay. Any comments from the council on the consent agenda? Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1E, with the correction as noted by the clerk in the minutes of April 28.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to the liquor license consent agenda.
Item Two is the liquor license consent agenda. On today's liquor license consent agenda, there are six applications for a Series 15 special event liquor license. Item A is Charlotte Hall Historical Society of Arizona. Item B, Arizona Wildlife Council. Item C, Prescott Meals on Wheels. Item D, Prescott Firefighters Charities. Item E, the Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 3600. And item F, Prescott Mountain Bike Alliance. The applications have been reviewed and determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval.
Okay, comments from the council?
Yeah, Mayor, I just have one. I don't know if anybody was here on this one, but I saw JP was here. But are they leaving themselves a buffer? Councilman Lozelle and I met, and we kind of agreed that there really should be two times on here. It should be when the event's over and when the liquor license ends. So we're not trying to, we're not going to have problems moving forward. And I didn't know if that was taken into account on these liquor licenses.
I don't know the answer to that. I know that in the past that they have taken that into consideration.
Great.
But I don't know for this particular one if they have.
It looked like they have, if I can read them right.
Well, with that said, I'd be glad to make a motion if you'd like, Mayor, after.
Okay, let's, any comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, chair will accept the motion.
Move to forward special event liquor license applications 2A through 2F to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please. Just as a housekeeping for the future, normally we ask the applicant in a normal license to be in attendance. Do we want to give any thought to that or just skip over that?
I think, Mayor, if there is anything that is maybe controversial that have been sort of a consent, I would have, like, one of us, if it was me, I would have, they would have known on Friday to have that person here, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, we can go to the regular agenda. Item A.
Item 3A: Public hearing and consideration of a person transfer liquor license application for a Series 9 and 9S liquor store and sampling license from Patrick Joseph Paul, applicant for Hagan located at 174 East Sheldon Street. Mr. Paul is requesting a person transfer liquor license for a Series 9 and 9S liquor store and sampling license for Hagan. The police department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with state law, and the community development department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issues. The application and license fees have been paid. The application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and the applicant is in attendance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Paul.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to be here on behalf of Hagan, and I'm happy to answer any questions. As you may know, we took over for Albertson's and are trying to do things by the book and become good new members of this community.
Great. We're glad to have you.
I've got something, Mayor. You know, we've approved these type of license, these sampling licenses, for several months now, and I go into these places and nobody's sampling. I'm missing out somewhere.
We'll do better. Okay. Make sure you send him.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Okay, let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move to approve.
Move to approve with no recommendations for liquor license application number, excuse me, move to approve liquor license application number 09130002 and 09130002S for a Series 9 and a Series 9S liquor store and sampling license for Hagan located at 174 East Sheldon Street.
Second. Okay, just a question. You said motion to move and then make no application or make no recommendation?
Motion to approve for liquor license application.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your kindness of the voice.
Item B.
Item 3B: Public hearing and adoption of ordinance number 4947-1485 for rezoning and adoption of Resolution Number 4305-1514 for amendment of the general plan land use designation of property at 926 Wetstein Avenue to permit four additional dwelling units for a total of five on the lot. Property owner, Gresseth Family LP, APN 115-05-014. Lot area 17,875 square feet, 0.41 acre. Public hearing continued from July 14, 2015. Ordinance number 4947-1485, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning of certain property within the city of Prescott located at 926 Wetstein Avenue from single-family 9 zoning district to multifamily high zoning district.
George. Thank you, Mayor. This is, we went through a brief introduction of this at your last meeting, so I'll keep this even shorter. This is a request to rezone a piece of property from single-family zoning to a multifamily high-density zoning. It also involves an amendment to the general plan's land use map from a low-medium density designation to a medium-high density designation. Those designations coordinate between the land use map and the zoning. The request is to rezone the property, perhaps best described as mid-block. It is shown on this map. The light yellow color indicates that it's single-family zoning. Adjacent to it to the east immediately is multifamily high-density zoning. That is the same district that this applicant is requesting. To the west is a property that will remain, at least for now, single-family zoning. And then further west, another property intended to be developed as, future development as multifamily properties. Across the street, primarily single-family, but at each end of the block on the south side of the street are general commercial zoning district. So these properties actually would allow business uses as well as residential uses. The request went through our planning commission for review on two separate occasions. The first occasion, there was a lot of input and interaction with neighboring property owners, and planning commission wanted to take some time and actually review what was said, actual circumstances in the field, so they went back out and took a look at it again and deferred action the first time around. Their second meeting, they, after discussing it thoroughly, unanimously recommended in favor of the rezoning, which would convert this property to the same zoning as the property immediately to the east. That recommendation came before you two weeks ago. As one of the concerns expressed at that time, and also questions that we've heard asked several times from the public as well as interactions with other folks, one of the things that has come up a number of times relates to the proximity of this location and its availability for use as a community residence or recovery home use. There are two things that will act against that, and I did not have an opportunity to talk about this at your last meeting, but one of the things that would work against that is proximity of a location on 12th Place that already has a residential component and therefore would trigger the requirement for an 800-foot buffer from that location to the next closest location where a residential component could go. The subject property is only approximately 400 feet away, and actually slightly less than 400 feet away. As long as the residential use of this property continues, none of the properties along Wetstein would be available for another community residence residential use. The other issue that comes into play is the typical use of properties for recovery homes, for group homes, tend to be single-family homes because they're trying to emulate a family setting with that whole concept. Probably in the vicinity of 96% to 98% of our known community residences currently are in single-family homes, not in a multifamily setting. That would be an anomalous approach to the community residence concept. So that was one of the things that we wanted to make sure that was clear because we have had some concerns, and they were expressed both here and at the planning commission. The other issue that came up that needs a little bit of explanation, and it's identified in the staff report as a requirement for a supermajority of council to approve the rezoning. Under state law, when any adjacent properties or properties within 150 feet of a property subject to rezoning that account for 20% or larger of the property proposed to be rezoned, protest that rezoning in some fashion, the supermajority requirement kicks in and requires a three-quarters vote by city council, which in case of seven members, it's six of seven members. Any of the adjacent properties or of the two properties across the street from this location have sufficient area to trigger that 20% and would therefore be able to trigger the requirement for the supermajority. We had numerous correspondence received from nearby property owners, including both sides immediately, opposing the rezoning at the planning commission level. And in a matter of discretion, it was recommended that we go ahead and process this as if those objections continue through the city council, even though no new correspondence was received. So that supermajority requirement that's placed before you today is something that we try to do to be as fair as possible to neighbors who may, either in writing or verbally at a meeting, object to a rezoning adjacent to them or nearby. With that information, I will conclude the staff presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. I will note that the applicant is here, and I also will note that Ken Mabarak of our planning commission is also here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciative of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which in-depth discusses this with regards to land use. That is, the planning and zoning commission's job is to look at things, look at the general plan, see what's compliant with such things as like the WILSA Plan and the general plan and the corridor plan, this plan and that plan and every other plan, which I appreciate. My question would have to do with understanding, we have limited amounts of water, understanding that we have a certain number of assured water properties, pre-98 assured water things, and anything else comes out of alt-water supply. I would like a little bit of conversation with regards to the implication for future requests, et cetera, for lot splits, because this kind of qualifies more of a lot split than anything else with regards to how the property's going to be used. It's going to go from one single-family unit to one single-family unit plus to residential components regarding duplexes or something of that nature. And there's going to be some sort of a water implication with regards to that, at which point, from my understanding of the situation, there is no contemplated water service agreement at this particular point in time. It's solely based on trying to look at a piece of property that has, I don't know what the word would be, evolved differently than it was at the day that the original house was built, back before you may have even had Prona Rosa Plaza over there, and everything in the area is changing and the whole thing's evolving, and so now it may make more sense on a corridor to do this rather than that, la di bla. But I would like some comments with regards so that everybody who owns single-family dwelling units that may want to be coming forward for certain types of lot splits understand that lot splits don't necessarily assure alternative water availability. Can we talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. I could address the lot split issue immediately because that has been actually discussed with the property owner. There is potential, based on the size of the lot, to divide it into two parcels. The layout that he's proposing for his development isn't very conducive to splitting it, but there is the potential, and we've shown it here, of splitting that lot into two. One would contain two units, the other would contain the house in three units. Such a lot split becomes, for water allocation purposes, equivalent to a subdivision plat, and at the time a split like this would occur, water service agreements would need to be reviewed and approved. And given that there are more than two that are proposed to cover the four additional units that are here, I believe that will come to the city council for action on a water service agreement. I would certainly defer to city manager if he wants to get into any more depth in that regard. However, I would also point out that we do have a very clear precedent that rezoning itself does not have any implication that water's guaranteed to the additional number of units that may have been created by rezoning. The parcel itself has water reserve, perhaps, and if it does, it has water reserve for a single-family home.
Thank you for that, and I would like to hear a little more in depth from Mr. McConnell because he's a little more well-versed on the water issue and understanding that we have significantly limited water for distribution at this point in time, so, yeah.
At the present time, there is one lot, and there is a single-family dwelling unit on that lot. The demand or water use for that lot is grandfathered by the Arizona Department of Water Resources. That is, in the groundwater accounting, that demand, that lot, that location is recognized and grandfathered. The effect of the rezoning proposed or requested would be to create four additional units for a total of five. As I just indicated, one of those is grandfathered for groundwater. The other four or new units to be constructed, or perhaps to be constructed on the property, would require an allocation of alternative water, a renewable resource, from the city council via a water service agreement. As George has pointed out, the council does have a very specific policy with respect to the rezoning of property, and the action of the council to rezone property does not create an entitlement to additional alternative water in this case. Actual water service is contingent upon the alternative water resource actually being available in the portfolio and approval by council of a water service agreement when an application for development of the property is received. So a distinction is made between zoning and actual development approval with respect to water and the granting of water. So should the council take action on this particular application today? And hypothetically, if that action is to approve the rezoning and the general plan amendment, that will not create an additional or an entitlement to additional water.
Thank you for that explanation, and I would hope with that explanation, we've illuminated an opportunity to discuss here more, let's say, sooner than later, that we need to take a look at policies with regards to future water distribution within the community with some of the limitations that we've been noticing more recently than not, Mr. McConnell.
Yeah, I got a few of them. You got the aerial photography slide? We got a lot of letters on this one, and I went out there today, spent some time, and I just had a lot of questions. This parcel right here, we got a letter from that. It's 924. They were worried about their view of Thumbbutte. This picture doesn't really do it justice. This is a big hill, a big hump right in the middle of here, but it looks like 924 is already set up for multifamily, and I know it's zoned multifamily. Is it being used as a single residence or is it being used as multifamily?
We were advised at the planning commission by that property owner that it was being converted and into and being used as a single-family home.
Okay, because they actually have, I mean, it doesn't show it here, but there's stripes for, I think, about five parking spots out here, and then there's a driveway that goes up and around the back there.
Correct, two spaces in the back as well, yeah.
And I noticed on the land use map that this parcel right here is a duplex already across the street. We got a letter from them, I think that's 929.
921.
921, excuse me. Can't read my own writing. But that is already being used as multifamily, but what I understand, it's a existing non-conforming use.
That's correct. It's been in place a long time. It is a non-conforming use. It's permitted non-conforming use. It can continue even under the residential, single-family zoning.
And one of the parcels that's down further, the 931, I think that's probably right in here. We got a letter from there, but I think they're already zoned commercial already.
That's correct. The two on the western end of the street on the south side are both commercial zoning, and the one on the eastern end on the south side is already commercial zoning.
And I think a lot of these concerns were related, a lot of letters we got were concerns that rehab would move into this, and it was being set up to do that. It cannot, not only can it not be rehab, but there's another, it cannot be sober living either. This would have to stay single-family.
It would have to be single-family zoning.
Or multifamily zoning.
Correct, unless they qualify as a family. So if you recall, one of our ordinance criteria for community residents is if there are four or less people residing there, that we don't count them as a community residence. They're a family by definition. So a four or smaller group can go anywhere in town regardless of whether this zoning changes or not.
Okay. So it's pretty safe. That point is pretty moot that it can be, become that, which takes a lot of those concerns away. Can we go back to that last one that you had up that showed the layout of the lot? Because we got another letter from 928, which is right over here on this side, and when you look, when you go out there and really look at how it's laid out, there's a pretty good vegetation buffer right in here, and you can kind of see the trees right here, right there, right there. Is there any way? Is there any way to move this structure somewhat in order to maintain that vegetation buffer, which might help it, the person at 928, keep a little solitude even with other, is there any way to keep, because I actually had a property on Black Drive, which is one street over, and we needed to get parking, and the city made us keep the tree in the front yard. Is there any way, when you do these kind of changes, to require that kind of buffer to mitigate some of the effects that it would have on the residents next door?
Yes, in fact, because this zoning will become more intensive than the adjacent zoning, there is a provision in our Land Development Code that requires an additional buffer space between the two properties. This boundary, this setback, which shows seven feet on this rendering, it's not really a site plan yet, they haven't submitted it to us formally, would require that they plant that to an 80% opacity level of vegetation, including trees, along that boundary. And that is to protect the remaining single-family home that will be off to the west of this property. It's still zoned single-family, so there's a difference in the density and intensity of the uses. So, a buffer through that area will be required as part of their submittal for building permitting.
Because also, in my current home, there's a big commercial development next to us, and they kept a huge strip of trees, and it really keeps the flavor of the neighborhood when you do that. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Jane? Thanks, Mayor. George, would you call this area a transition area, as it's described in the General Plan?
It is definitely a transition area. You see a combination of single-family, multifamily, and commercial uses in this vicinity, and they're scattered in all areas around it. Typically, in a situation like this, it's transitioning to the more intensive uses. It's very unusual to transition to less intensive uses. So, I would anticipate, just based on what we see here, that eventually more, if not all, of the area would become either multifamily high or commercial zoning. That doesn't necessarily mean that the single-family uses that are there would go away. All of our zoning districts have a hierarchy of permitted uses, and single-family uses are allowed in almost all of our zoning districts. So, even rezoning probably wouldn't necessarily make it change its use, it would simply allow it to change at a later date.
Well, Section 5.4 of the General Plan says, "For transition areas, without a plan to meet a transition area's land use and circulation needs, opportunities to advance community goals can be lost." And from reading your staff report, it looks like the last study, I assume that's equivalent to a plan, was done in 1997, which seems, that's 18 years ago. Has there been an updated plan for this area?
No, there has not.
It seems to me that that would be appropriate before we act on a rezoning, that we get the neighbors together and go through a planning process so they can decide their own destiny here.
That is a possibility. It has been done in other neighborhoods. Generally speaking, not when there's an immediate pressure to take an action of a rezoning specifically. Individual property owners' rights to ask for a rezoning are often the trigger that gets us into a larger planning setting for neighborhoods, but given the very small area here, not sure what kind of response you're going to get. Wanting to keep the single-family zoning in those small areas while surrounded by commercial zoning is a very difficult task to accomplish.
Well, I think it's presumptive of us to assume what they would want without actually going through the process of developing a plan.
Ken? I have a comment, real quick.
You got one.
Yeah, and I guess what I would like to say, the fact that we are not taking the right from those folks to occupy their homes as single-family residential.
That's correct. This rezoning does not require that a multifamily development occurred, allows the single-family to continue.
So, this whole process has happened all over the city. In fact, Whipple-Monizuma, across from Sonic, all those houses are still single-family residential in a commercial zone.
That is correct.
And they have not changed the transition of that yet, but they're sitting on property that's probably well worth double the value for commercial as it is for single-family residential. So, there's a value to that, and it's not forcing anybody's hand to want to be business or commercial over residential. But as you can well see by the map, or well see where Sonic is, or even Gail Gardner, the influx of multifamily, as well as doctors' offices, MedWise, all along that stretch by the fairgrounds, all that has transitioned from single-family residential to business and commercial. It's not unheard of to have happen in a city as things change.
Ken, before, let me ask George a couple of questions. On the duplex, let's go back to the water for a moment. Does the applicant understand that this is just part of a process before he can build?
Yes, sir. We've thoroughly described what these steps are. Water service agreement would be something that's typically submitted with either the lot split request or with the submittal of the building permit construction. He's aware of that, his designer is aware of that.
What is our policy on a duplex? One meter, two meters? Do we have a policy?
We generally require one meter per building, so in a situation such as this, they may end up with three meters, one for the existing house and one for each of the duplex structure.
So, a duplex could have a meter?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Now, the one that you referred to across the street, the duplex?
Yes.
Off the top, is that one meter, two meters?
I don't know.
Are they operating as a single-family water service agreement with two users?
They are operating as two individual dwelling units. I am not aware of whether it's a single meter or two meters.
Craig, is this part of the policy, as we look at it, that a duplex can operate with one meter, or?
Well, typically, the water service is to the lot, and so if there is a duplex sitting on one lot, as George has pointed out, and presumably, you know, there always seem to be exceptions, but generally speaking, it would be a meter for the lot.
Okay, but using that same theory, then the subject property, if they had a large enough meter, the one lot could be served by one meter, even though there might be five users.
That's correct.
So, with the exception of upgrading the meter size, they would have nothing that they really had to do as far as a water service agreement?
Well, no. They would have had to receive, apply for and receive a building permit to construct four residential units, which would trigger the requirement for water service agreement. The water service agreement is not directly linked to how many meters there are.
Okay.
It's the demand of the proposed use and the number of units, which comprises.
Yeah, I just had a question, because you were saying there wasn't really anything done since '78, but I know 25 years ago, almost all of Black Drive that's on this map was single-family residential, and it made the big switch, and they're all pretty much commercial now. And I thought there was a study done called the Willow Creek Corridor, something or other, that I think the crossings triggered that, where that whole Willow Creek Road was reevaluated.
Correct. There was a study that included all of Willow Creek Road, including the area adjacent to this, but that study specifically excluded any recommendations for this area. In some portions of the study area along the full length of Willow Creek Road, they picked out areas that they recommended some changes to, and this one was not one of those. So, it didn't include a recommendation for a change one way or the other. It was also subject to a '97 or '98 study, the Ponarosa Redevelopment Study, that resulted in the old mall being converted to the current shopping center, the shops at the Boulder Shopping Center. That study is the one that quoted that this area needed reevaluation, and I believe we quoted that in our staff report. It said, basically, that at that time, it was appropriate for the residents of the area to get together and decide if they wanted to attempt to save the single-family character or not. Subsequent to that, we've had rezonings to commercial on each end of the street, and at least one of the multifamily zonings occurred, again, after that recommendation. There has been no organization of the neighbors to try to do something that would initiate a study to save the single-family character.
Real quick, George. I'm hearing that there's one meter per lot. I have a question when it comes to a lot that's on Second Street, but it's not about this project, but it's about the specifics of a one-water meter, and it happens to be the house that was moved off of Monizuma Street, as you're probably well aware where that property went, that house.
Yes.
Over on Second Street. Are they only required to have one water meter? Even though it's multifamily lot?
Right.
They have two structures, they have moved in there, and they're going to be both on the same water meter. I mean, I'm okay with that, but very positively, there's two houses that are sitting on one lot.
Well, Councilman, the way that works is that in order to get that house that was moved onto the lot operational, it requires connection to the water system, it requires the sewer system, it requires meeting building codes and so forth. The permit desk over, you know, the other, over there, reviews those applications and then evaluates the capacity of the meter to serve the two structures. And that does require a specific approval. From time to time, that approval or request for approval comes to me with a statement of evaluation of the demand on that lot and the meter size which is proposed and so forth, and that is the system. So, it's not an automatic thing where you just slip another house in the back of a lot and everything's fine.
And the reason why I bring this up is because we're on the Water Committee, and if you're really trying to evaluate your alternative water supply, how can you do that if you're not accounting for each structure and each livable unit that requires water? That's just my comment.
Thank you, Councilman, because we're dealing with that right now. Because you've had a number of people, whether they're inside or outside the city, that have done things over the years and been feeding off of the water we have with no accountability. And then all of a sudden, you go and you catch it, and you say, "We're going to shut the water off." Well, not after 20 years of service. Then all of a sudden, you've got another issue to deal with. So, I was under the impression that by policy, at least that's what I thought with the last one we were dealing with, one unit, one meter.
That's something that we can talk about later, but certainly, it has its way down the stream of what we need to talk about, for sure.
Ken, why don't you come on now? Then we'll go to the public.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. Ken Mabarak at 2076 Golf Links Drive. I'm on the Planning Commission. And we also have two other commissioners here today. But I wanted to come down and talk about this particular issue in that we had two meetings on this topic and would have had more if there were more neighborhood involvement. The first meeting, we did have several neighbors come out and talk to us. Two of them, if my recall is correct, two of them really wanted to keep their single-family residence for themselves in that neighborhood. We had a second meeting wherein we voted, and I don't recall that, were any neighbors there, maybe the one neighbor to the east of this house?
There were two, I think, who spoke at the second meeting.
So, the tenor had changed between the first meeting and the second meeting, and there was a lot of discussion, primarily by one of the commissioners, me, who looked at this and said, "This is the classic spot zoning that happened over the years." You do have that one duplex across the street from this property that was grandfathered in, and I'm not sure why it was grandfathered, but they had a fire or something at one point. So, you have, despite what you're seeing on the map, you also have another multifamily directly in the middle of this. So, you've got that houndstooth look in the block. You've got the multifamily that's one lot over off of Gail Gardner, that's the two lots that got zoned multifamily. Then you've got office and multifamily on the east side of this property. So, it's really a very hodgepodge. And if you look at the larger General Plan map, what you'll see is that whole thing is Business General. It's just these houses on this lot, on this street that aren't. And it was severely impacted with the construction of the remodeling of the mall next to it. Even their street access was impacted because of the commercial activity. So, we looked at this and said, "It's a shame. I said, maybe somebody ought to get together and rezone this whole thing." But that was just my opinion. But as far as the zoning matter was concerned, there made no sense as to not having this multifamily. There were two neighbors that were concerned, the one right next to it. He did not send another letter, he came to the first meeting, and that was the only meeting. And I don't see if any of the neighbors are here today. I don't recognize any of them. But the point we had here is that this whole area really had a sense of commercial activity, multifamily if nothing else. So, we had no difficulty in rezoning this. And we would have had more issues, Councilwoman Wilcox, had there been more neighborhood objection, and there just wasn't. And we talked about it. Commissioner Mensah and I discussed it prior to the meeting, but we'll have as many meetings as necessary. And we always have. Part of the purpose that we feel the Planning Commission does is kind of air out a lot of the concerns that the Council might have or people would bring up to Council. Thank goodness, we don't have any control over water. So, we're limited in that respect, and I think that's a blessing, so we can just look at this from a real estate and a community perspective. So, I wanted to share those thoughts with you as to what deliberation went into this project. None of it had to do with water issues. It simply had to do with what's the nature of that neighborhood there. Councilman Cookneal had talked about the Black Drive property, and you can just see, it really made a lot of sense, everybody, that's what that is. In fact, even that street, you've got Business General and multifamily. So, the neighborhood got looked over, in my opinion, as to the General Plan, and this should have been, this whole thing should have been Business General at that time. It's not, and I think that the neighbors on this street will probably not feel the impact if this is multifamily, and they put four more units in there. But I think it's an invitation at some point in the future that some of these neighbors get together and change that entire street. It's the old spot zoning. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions from Ken?
I'd like to make one more comment. I think it's the lack of a plan that bothers me, and this whole block is a serial, a series of spot zonings, which really defies the whole idea of doing a plan. And I would like to see a policy where your department goes out to people and initiates a neighborhood planning process, rather than waiting for neighbors to come up with the idea and realize, "Oh, we can plan our own neighborhood." Many people don't know that. It's not until there's a crisis at their front door, like this rezoning request, that they start looking into it and find out, "Oh, we could have done that 10, 15 years ago, but we didn't know we could."
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor, I keep going back to the couple that we're dealing with today, where you have multiple units feeding off of one meter, and we've identified that is a potential significant relationship between a limited amount of alternative water for distribution. And I guess at this point, it would be, Mr. McConnell, is it the water service agreement time? Is that the time to discuss how many units per meter? Or what's the deal here? Because fact of the matter is, under the impression that a meter services a unit, and the unit could be one duplex, so that would be two residential units, but it's one building, as you said, but you don't have two and three and four different buildings feeding off the same meter.
Generally speaking, Councilman, a meter serves a lot, because all of the property on that lot is owned by a single party. So, if it's a duplex or a triplex on the lot, that lot has not been subdivided, has, you know, it's one lot with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 25 units, depending how big the lot is. If it's new construction, then the demand of that lot is evaluated, and, you know, that generally leads to a water service agreement, which comes before this body, at which time the Council has a decision to make of whether or not to grant water. And again, there is no entitlement to water unless you effectively have a grandfathered law.
unless you effectively have a grandfathered lot of record. But additional water, there's no guarantee as to availability or the approval of this council.
What is the standard? I just had a fellow council ask me a minute ago, meter size for one lot?
Well, for a, well, again, it depends. If it's one lot, it depends on how many units there are on the lot. If it's a single-family dwelling units, it's typically a 3/4, 5/8 meter. If there are two units on there, it may be a 1-inch meter. If there are more units, it can be a larger meter.
Craig, it also has to do with how many fixtures are in the?
Right.
Yeah.
And that's, as the Councilman points out, there is a basis for determining the size of the meter, and that is typically how many fixtures and so forth, whether it's sprinkled, et cetera.
Okay, I guess later on down the road, maybe sometime sooner than later, we're going to discuss this with regards to the water policy. I can see where there, because we've had two come before us within the last two months, where you've got people who have been serving more than one unit and have created a problem when the meter was intended on serving the one unit. Now, all of a sudden, it's serving two and three and now potentially even, or whatever they call it, vacation rentals that are being constructed and every other doggone thing. At some level, fact of the matter is, we have a significantly reduced amount of alternative water to distribute at this particular point in time. And we're going to have to get a grip with regards to what is, what is, you know, I can't think of the term I want to use, Craig, but the fact of the matter is, when you think of 314 acre-feet of water until the end of time or until we get money enough to figure out how to get the big chino water in here, we've only got this much water. And you've got this much property mass out there. And when you start getting in these proposed multiple uses, which was intended to be, or thought to be, a single-family unit, well, "single-family" kind of infers a family, but not multiple-family. Now, from what I'm hearing from you, it's not one duplex. It could be, "Oh, we're going to bring something in and maybe get a 16-plex or a 4-plex or three 4-plexes or whatever, all being served off of one meter."
Well, and that is correct. And that's the way it works. If a developer walked in and said, "I have 110-unit apartment building," we would, in conjunction with that developer's engineer, determine what size meter, single, singular, is required. Not 110 meters, one meter. And it's the same thing at the other end of the spectrum, which is that if you have a lot and somebody wants to put two units, a duplex, on the lot, those, both of those dwelling units are owned by the same party. There's one meter. There's a calculation done of the demand, and that sizes the meter. The distinction between that and other circumstances, which the Water Issues Committee has been dealing with, is that those have involved property splits. So the examples I just gave are a lot, single lot, not involving a property split, although, as has been represented today, there is a potential of this property to be split. At that time, there would be an evaluation of that water demand. There'd be a water service agreement, et cetera, et cetera. But that's a different circumstance. A splitting of a lot and constructing or wanting separate meters is something which is much different than a number of units on the same parcel. So there is a distinction there. As to the demand and additional demand, which is posed by additional units and/or the splitting of properties, that is a topic certainly which is being addressed and has been introduced for further discussion at the Water Issues Committee, specifically about whether or not, as a policy matter in the future, the council may wish to no longer approve or have approved lot splits. Because as you point out, over a long period of time, the increased demand for splitting lot after lot after lot adds up to quite a large number. The other aspect is that, as a policy matter, which has been introduced to the Water Issues Committee, that the more lots which are served outside the city limits, which do not have return flow by sewer system, that's a one-way trip with no recovery of water. So I think that certainly these topics have been introduced to the Water Issues Committee. And the indication is that we will be discussing those, certainly in more detail in the coming months.
Thank you for getting to where I wanted to go, and I appreciate that explanation.
Just kind of wrap up where I'm coming from on this whole deal. You know, we talk and give a lot of lip service to affordable housing. From my standpoint, when anybody can take a lot like this and put two duplexes in one house, it becomes more affordable than just one house sitting on one lot, especially when it's right next to a shopping center, a half a mile or less from a hospital. To me, from sitting on the Water Issues Committee about water availability, this is a lot that I would consider first, prior to something else, because it has a method to help our citizens in this community. And it is ripe for redevelopment. So I will be supporting this rezone.
Just a question. You may have already said this. So the house currently has a 3/4-inch meter. We're guessing.
We're guessing. That would be typical of a single-family home.
And would a 3/4-inch meter be able to handle the flow of five?
No.
Family, no. So they'd have to get a bigger meter. And would that have to come before council? Or would that just be in the, in buildings?
Depends on the number of units. If hypothetically, they had an existing single-family dwelling unit, and it was proposed to add an additional unit, there would be an evaluation done on the basis of fixture units and so forth. And then it would be an inch or an inch and a quarter meter. If it was four additional units, there would be a similar analysis done, a meter size determined, and that would be the requirement, a water, and if it's, and in this case, actually with the number of units, four, it would require a water service agreement to be considered and approved or not approved by the council.
And I totally get what Jim is saying because, you know, if our average family uses 4,500 gallons a month, you're now taking a lot that was sucking up 4,500 and now maybe like 23,000 gallons. And if we started doing that all over town, we'd be in trouble.
Are you providing affordable housing? Is that still not the mission of this council?
I was just talking about water.
Well, we've set aside water for affordable housing.
Okay, well, thank you.
Does this fit the criteria? And if it does, then we should be spending it.
But I see exactly what you're saying on that.
Thank you, and thank you for extrapolating out of Mr. McConnell for an explanation, not only for me sitting here, but for people out there listening, that there's a difference between the meter serving a unit and the meter serving five or six units solely by changing out the size of the meter to address the issue. And I understand that better.
Anyone from the public? Dan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Daniel Mattson. I live over on Merritt Street. By the way, I live on a multifamily, multi-unit zoned lot, and there is a single dwelling there. So just because zoning is upgraded doesn't mean that there's going to be more. He plans on doing this in the future. If he's thinking on a lot split, he's probably thinking on putting in two meters when he submits the plan, I would expect, because it wouldn't make a lot of sense to put in one and then want to split it later. It'd be a lot easier to just put in two meters. The other thing, the 4,500 gallons a month for a single-family unit, a lot of that is because of the need to water landscaping, and that is reduced considerably with multifamily units, which have a much lower usage rate. That's one of the neat little tidbits I learned while working on the general plan. So, and again, I agree with Steve about the affordable housing. The general plan also talked about trying to encourage building neighborhoods so that they would be able to walk everywhere. Perfect example of a location where that would work very, very well because they do have all the, you know, they have the shopping center, Walmart and all that to the one side. They've got all the medical facilities to the other. Any bus route that comes through, well, Yabupai Regional Transit stops at the hospital. And I do believe they also stop at Walmart. So they're in range of what public transit's being put together. This is an ideal location to encourage affordable housing. The water usage, again, we have water set aside for affordable housing. So if the owner would like to submit his plan in such a way that it qualified for affordable housing, we've got our water issue taken care of. We've used, we wanted to use that as an incentive to encourage affordable housing. I see this as solving a lot of problems. The people who do live there, we're pretty much talking about, what, five or six single-family housing units holding out an area that's surrounded by commercial and a church? Progress. This is an area that is logical for it to become either multifamily zoning or commercial zoning. This would be a perfect place for people to live who service the commercial properties in the area. So I think it's a no-brainer. I think this should be approved. And as far as neighborhood planning, a few years ago, the Dexter neighborhood chose to begin the process of upgrading their plan. It was a much larger area. There were many more residents involved. Here, we've got five or six residents who would be the anchor for that planning. I don't see that as being worth the effort involved. This area has evolved into a transitional area, and I think it only makes sense to make the transition and go ahead and approve this zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Okay, Councilor, Charlie, go ahead.
Mayor, thanks. I wanted to see if there was any other public comment. For the first two weeks I was looking at this, I struggled with the idea of rezoning this property based upon many of the concerns that were raised. Since then, in researching this pretty extensively, it does seem to make sense as this is a transition zone. And if you apply a majority of the theories of land planning in future, this is an area that's going to transition. I did have two questions for the applicant or his representative.
Mayor, Council, Mark Pugh, Lincoln Avenue.
Mark, how are you today?
Good.
Good. Based on the layout, is this the anticipated footprint of each unit?
Correct.
Okay. So the question for the Planning Department is, based on the envelope, could these be expanded in size but not occupancy? Meaning, you can't add additional units beyond the duplexes? Are they going to be limited to duplexes? Or could they become something bigger?
Based on the density allowance for this, assuming the multifamily zoning occurs, the five units will be the maximum they're allowed.
Okay. And then, Mark, I'm looking, it looks like they're one-bedroom units on both duplexes?
Correct.
Okay. My only other question is just from a neighborhood impact side. Where does the barbecue go with these?
I don't know that we were considering outdoor living on these units.
Perfect. I think one of the concerns of the adjoining neighbor to the west is the impact to their single-family residents. And if there was anything exterior along that western boundary, I think that could exacerbate the problem. So I would just encourage you and the owner to avoid anything near that seven-foot side setback on this property.
And actually, our window openings on that wouldn't even be to the west. They'd be to the north and the south. Any violation as far as privacy is concerned is minimized, you know, by design, in so much as that's concerned. And I might just mention that at one particular point, we had a number of residents that came in. And the gentleman particularly to the west has since approached my client, just out of a chance encounter, and indicated that he no longer resisted this. He had no problem with it. My own personal feeling, when I look at this piece of property from Hastings to Rosser, we've got a few single-family residences that are located on this particular street. Nothing we're doing would hamper the people that chose to remain single-family residents. And in conveying the street, I've noticed that directly across the street, we've got the duplex use next to it. We've got what appears to be a business being run out of there, perhaps electrical. When I first became involved in the project and I ran out and photographed the property directly to the west, by all appearances, and I've got photographs to support this, appeared to be a plumbing business. There was, you know, heavy equipment in the front yard. There was vans in front. There was all kinds of building supplies all throughout the front yard, et cetera. By all accounts, if I drove up and down that street, I would have believed that was a commercial use by the feel of the neighborhood and by its current use.
Are you talking about, when you say to the west, are you talking about 928?
Directly to the west, correct.
Perfect. And then I've got one follow-up question for George. The site immediately to the north that is shown in white on your map?
This large area?
What is the actual zoning designation for that?
It's the same single-family zoning that this property currently has. Single-family zoning allows churches by conditional use. All of our residential districts allow churches by conditional use.
Okay. You know, with that, and understanding that the water meter, the water meter itself doesn't concern me. It's the water allocation. Because really, the meter doesn't matter. You could have one meter and 100 units or one meter and one unit. It's the allocation that we determine they need, and that will be coming back to us. So, you know, based on that, the research that's been done, the conversation, I'm going to be supporting the rezoning today.
Anyone else? Okay, our role, we have a recommendation from planning and zoning. It was unanimous to rezone this property. So the chair will accept a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4947-1485.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes.
Oh, I thought it was on.
Passes 6 to 1, Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4305-1514.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes 6 to 1, Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Let's go to item C.
Item C, approval of payment to trauma intervention programs of Arizona Incorporated in the amount of $23,906 for fiscal year 2016.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're seeking your approval this afternoon to expend $23,906,000 directed towards the trauma intervention program. The TIP, as it's commonly referred to, assists both police, fire, and EMS services in the community by providing some first care for both the victims of criminal acts, victims of fires, victims of injury accidents and the similar, to include survivors of suicide and those who associate or who are family members of the same. This is a multi-year contract that was approved by the council back in 2013, November of 2013. Basically, the per capita cost is about 60 cents per population member in the city of Prescott. And, you know, of specific interest, the last year, the last fiscal year, there were 171 requests by Prescott Fire and Police Services with an average response time provided of 27 minutes and an average time on call at about 2 hours and 14 minutes, which ultimately, direct catering back was to about 524 citizens benefited from this particular service. It also allows firefighters, police officers and that to get back to their core duties of providing public safety for this community by not leaving a victim of a crime or a victim of a fire or EMS emergency to fend for themselves. So with that, we seek your approval this afternoon for that appropriation and that expenditure.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. And Chief, thanks for your words on that. The TIP program is a very important program in this community. We all know that. And it's one of those situations where you never want to use it, but when you need it, it's a good thing to have. So I'm pleased to see this coming back in front of us. My question is, I've read through the staff report, and ultimately, I see TIP as an integral part of our future. And I'd like to see this agreement get extended into a longer term with them so that we've got that path set going into the future.
I appreciate that, and I will most certainly take that under advisement and be able to move something.
Yeah, I echo a lot of things Charlie's saying. I completely support the TIP program. I did the quick math on that, and last year, we spent about 139 per call. And I look at that as, with the on-call time of 2 hours and 14 minutes. that as, with the on-call time of 2 hours and 14 minutes. If we free up our resources as well, we free up the fire guys, we free up the police guys, TIP goes in there, it does a good job. And we don't leave these people abandoned when they're really, they're shook up. It's a good service. I support it 100%.
Anyone else? Probably in the report, split between police and fire?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We need a couple of guys back. Any comments from the public?
Sure.
Dan, you want to take up about 30 seconds?
I can probably do that. I do a lot of work, as you know, with people who are potential suicides, and a lot of times, there are organizations that call me instead of the fire department so that we save the city the money and resources. And a lot of times, I bump into the TIP folks. I wanted to point out, they also help at the hospitals when people pass away. And they are a huge help. So they help free up medical staff. They do a really good job of counseling people and helping them to find longer-term counseling. This is a priceless program that would be well worth it at twice the price. So like I said, they do amazing work. I do run into them from time to time, and like I say, at twice the price, it would still be a bargain.
And, you know, you're right, Daniel. I mean, these people, it isn't a job for them. They put their heart into this work, and that's what makes the difference, I think.
And they're on call 24/7.
You betcha.
In fact, I looked into the possibility of getting involved in it. I found that there was an awful lot of overlap. I already do a lot of what they do. But they have times set aside where they're on call, and they're, they have the understanding that if that call comes up, they'll jump up and, you know, throw on their clothes and get out the door right away. It would be really hard if we tried to hire some people to do this. I have a hard time imagining what you'd be paying all these people. It would be a lot more than this.
And, you know, Mayor, I agree with Councilman Arnold. I'd like to see this be a multi-year agreement with them. You know, I could see three years or whatever.
It is actually currently a multi-year agreement. I believe it's sunset, I shouldn't say sunset, but will be revisited at the five-year mark from 2013, so 2018.
Fantastic. That'll get into the budgeting process on how you extend it out. Jim's on his way. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Mayor, move to approve payment to trauma intervention programs of Arizona Incorporated in the amount of $23,906 for fiscal year 2016.
Second on that.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you. Adam D.
Item 3D, award of city contract number 2015-198 to Pioneer Distributing for supply of oil and lubricants in an amount not to exceed $40,000, various funds.
Thank you, mayor and council. The item before you is a result of a bid process that resulted in six proposals for the oil and lubricants, which include oil, hydraulic fluids, grease, antifreeze, and solvents that are used for preventative maintenance in all of the city's vehicles and heavy equipment. The resulting contract request is with Pioneer Distributing, and that is the company that produced the lowest unit pricing for the related items, which are purchased after ordering from Fleet Services who manages those products and purchases in bulk to get the lowest pricing possible throughout the year for the vehicles. What I would also point out is that what's requested is a three-year contract. It would automatically renew each year with pricing that would fluctuate based on the Consumer Price Index, but not more than 3% increase or more than 3% decrease in any annual timeframe. And then finally, it would also allow for two one-year extensions beyond the first three-year contract period. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Anyone?
This locks in the price for an entire year?
It locks in the unit pricing for a year, and then it increases by the CPI each year not to exceed 3% one way or the other.
Well, that's kind of a heck of a deal right now, because, I mean, I remember when gas, fuel, oil prices went from 282 to 525 in three months. So that's awesome to lock that in.
Okay, on the oil and grease side?
Yeah.
Comments from the public? Okay. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, move to award city contract number 2015-198 to Pioneer Distributing for supply of oil and lubricants in the annual amount not to exceed $40,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Adam E.
And mayor, I need to step away for a potential conflict on this one.
You know, oddly enough, mayor, I have to step away for a potential conflict of interest on this one as well.
Anybody else want to leave?
The good old boys are leaving us. Oh, no.
Mayor, I'd like to step away just because.
You stand with her?
Item 3E, award of city contract number 2016-006 for the fiscal year 2016 pavement rehabilitation project to Fan Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $1,740,193.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. This is a award of a construction contract to Fan Contracting in the amount just reported. It's for a variety of streets that are listed in the staff report for pavement rehabilitation and resurfacing throughout the city. It also involves some chip ceiling of some unpaved streets and some alleys that are also listed in the staff report. This is a part of our 2016 pavement program. The bids were solicited early in June and opened on July 2nd, and the lowest apparent bidder at the time was Fan Contracting, whose written confirmation and verification process has been completed and deemed reasonable and balanced and responsive. We're looking at about a 50-day, 5-0 working period with construction beginning early in August. There is, in terms of warranty, the question has come up in the past, this has, every project that we do has a minimum of a two-year warranty for the construction process, and the pavement preservation rehabilitation program is designed to last seven to 10 years for the various streets. That will vary on other conditions, but that's the design goal that we have. And funding is allocated in the 2016 budget for this project, and if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. I just wondering, and Craig, if for some reason after August that the voters do not approve the additional increase in streets and roads, this is a project that can still go forward and be prioritized as such?
That's correct. As has been presented many times, the selection of these streets is on a prioritized basis from a pavement management standpoint. That is maximizing the effectiveness of the dollars which are put towards this program. So if there is a reduction in future funding, this still would have been on the priority basis a project that needs to be done.
Super, thank you, Craig.
Steve.
Have we changed the method of how we lay down that friction course, you know, so we don't end up with something like we had on Iron Springs Road and Whipple Connector two years ago?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jane.
How did you determine the priority for doing these particular streets, and what's the cost per mile?
I don't have the cost per mile at the tip of my fingertips right now, but the overall program has been a process that's been going on for five to seven years now. There's been inventories of various streets, their basic condition, whether it's an arterio collector, residential street, all of that has been prioritized. There's been a presentation last fall that summarized the pavement program and how we've prepared it over the years. It's been fairly balanced between preservation, rehabilitation, and reconstruction over the life of the program to date. It's also been fairly balanced between arterios, collectors, and residential streets in developing the program. So it's been a very balanced approach. We haven't gone out and just spent all the money on reconstructing A Street a year. We try to make the best use of the funds annually to beef up the program based on the priorities that have been identified.
I thought we were going to have a workshop session on how these priorities were determined.
Councilwoman, my recollection of that workshop, and it was to be on August 4th, but it's rescheduled to September, is on projects prioritization and programming. My recollection was not specifically about pavement projects, per se, although pavement rehabilitation projects, per se, although certainly that can be touched upon if the council's interested in that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Steve, any night work or question?
Not on this project.
Okay. Comments from the public?
Mayor, I'd like to move to award city contract number 2016-006 for the fiscal year of 2016 pavement rehabilitation project to Fan Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $1,740,193.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Adam F.
Item 3F, approval of amendment number 2 to city contract number 2012-223A2 with Duke's root control, a one-year extension of wastewater system treatment in an amount not to exceed $110,000.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Henry H. Public Works. The item before you is root control in sanitary sewer system, which is a common occurrence. Roots cause backlog, pipe fracture, and pipe failure that result in sanitary sewer overflow, property damage, and increased maintenance cost. The purpose of this contract is to apply specialized herbicide to a predetermined area of the sanitary sewer system, and where the roots have gone out and then a root intrusion has caused a lot of damages. The chemical that they apply will take care of these roots and within 30 inches outside of the pipe. This is harmless to all the vegetation that grow roots, and it's guaranteed or warranted for two years. If within two years, we have to reapply, they come back and reapply it at no cost, then they will give us additional three years of warranty. This is one project that we have done on a yearly basis. In this case, we have this one for this year, we have one more renewal that will be coming before you next year. If you have any more questions, I'll be happy to answer, and Scott Gregorio here as well.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you, and Henry, appreciate you bringing this forward. From an operations standpoint, how many times have they had to come back under their contract and do a reapplication? Or would you say it's a handful, or 99% of the time, we're successful with this treatment in the areas?
May I ask, Scott, with your permission, Scott?
Yeah, there's twice that I know of.
Okay. Yeah, in talking with the wastewater collection folks and going along for some of the cleanings, they speak very highly not only of this company but the success rate that we've been having.
Yes. That's why they warranty for two years, and we have to reapply it again. They come back and do it and add another three years to the warranty. They are very confident. And in the past, we have had no issues with vegetation, with neighbors, or anything. In fact, this is something that, similar to things that you can buy at Home Depot and Lowe's, you know, nothing is stronger.
We would only buy that at Lowe's, by the way.
Thank you, mayor. Henry, I just noticed it's just razor, router, registered trademark. This doesn't put any other hindrance into the, at the sewer plant itself as far as extra processing. It's not inhibiting that process.
No, sir. You're correct.
Comments from the public? Okay. Motion?
Mayor, move to approve amendment number 2 to the city contract number 2012-223A2 with Duke's root control for a one-year contract extension in the amount not to exceed $110,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Any further business? We're adjourned.